Council, public hearing will now be called to order, Madam Clerk.
Counselors Kadeem?
Here.
Joseph Camara?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
LaLaby LeBeau?
Here.
Long?
Here.
Pelletier?
Here.
President Ponti?
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. First item before us is public hearing. It is going to be item one for public hearing, which is the kennels. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
Motion.
Motion to open the hearing has been made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by Councilor Pelletier. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Calling all proponents wishing to speak on this item.
As it's stated in my memo, I was working with the Building Commissioner. Glenn Hathaway asked me to provide, write a bylaw amendment to look at making kennels compliant. Currently, our kennel bylaw talks about three dogs, not four, and state law is four dogs. And so this would look at doing two things. One, modifying the definition, changing it from three to four, and then, under the use table, modifying that that says kennels containing, instead of three, it would be four or more. So that is strictly what it's doing. It's only changing to comply with state law.
Thank you very much.
Any other proponents?
Any other proponents on this item? Calling all proponents. Hearing now. Any opponents wishing to speak on the kennels? Calling all opponents. Hearing now. Motion to close the hearings. Been made by Counselor Stephen Camara, seconded by Councilor Joseph Camara. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on our agenda is the wind energy corridor. Is there a motion to open?
Motion.
Motion to open the hearings has been made by Councilor Long, seconded by Councilor Pelletier. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Is there any proponents wishing to speak on this item?
Thank you. Bill Roth, Planning Director, City of Fall River. In my memo, it talks about better position the city for the future and economic development that's going to come with wind energy, especially offshore wind. First of all, let me clarify. This bylaw amendment has nothing to do with placing windmills along the waterfront. That's been the folks, a lot of people have called and asked about that. We have a separate windmill bylaw that dictates when and where you can put those. This is to look at the support services and the industry that will support offshore wind, and they need parcels that predominantly have access to the water. That would be in our WTOD district. And so what we would look at recommending is adding three specific, very detailed, specific uses to the use table of 8636. Would be M, wind energy, industry research and development. So that's anything with that industry that's doing research and development. Or wind energy industry processing, fabrication, manufacturing, and assembly. A lot of the services bring the different parts in. They put them together, put them on the barge, and then they send them out to offshore wind. And then the support services. There's a whole host of support services that are, that they look at for maintenance, and they require waterfront access, such as repairing the cables or any of the other things. So that's what we're looking at doing, adding three very specific uses, allowing it along the waterfront to better position ourselves to attract businesses in this industry that's going to expand greatly with offshore wind.
A little bit based on your experience, I believe Congressman Kennedy has done some work on this wind energy aspect. Is that anything you're familiar with?
No, I'm not.
Okay. Thank you. Anything further? Councilor C1, Councilor Kadeem?
Thank you. I just got a question with regards to the table of uses. So item O that we're going to be adding or looking to add, the wind energy industry support services. That's a little vague in terms of what exactly that is. If a company does come in and they determine, obviously, that they're going to be looking to either manufacture or do some additional research with windmills or wind turbines, would they be able to put up, even if it's a temporary wind turbine in the district that's what we're talking about? And if so, would the wind turbines be, I guess, the zoning bylaw that you talked about for the wind turbines, would that oversee or control what they can and can't do in terms of wind turbines at that location?
Well, under the research and development portion, that's predominantly in building. We never really envisioned it for putting one up for research and development, for that type of thing. That would be done, you know, in an area where there's a much higher wind velocity and different things. And I think that under our zoning, we could say, no, that's not it. You have to look at, we would then fall back to our, the windmill bylaw itself.
Okay. I just, I haven't had the opportunity to look at that, so I'm not 100% familiar with the bylaw. So would they still require a special use permit to, in order to put at least a temporary one up, windmill?
I don't have the bylaw with me. I do not know if it is a special permit in the WTOD or even if it's allowed.
All right. Mr. President, through you. Madam Clerk, so the process here is just the public hearing and then, is there a vote on the agenda for tonight?
No.
Or is this just to be referred back to planning?
It's just a public hearing tonight.
It's just a public hearing, yep.
Okay. And then we'll have an opportunity to come back before us for an actual vote of the change. So before we get that, could you forward over to us the wind turbine bylaw?
Okay.
Just so we can review that?
Yes.
All right. Perfect.
Thank you. In addition to that, there was a resident or a couple residents that have reached out to the Counselors through email. And I guess there was a study done on the viability of wind energy from a wind farm in Vineyard Bay that Kennedy's office is currently working on. So perhaps when this does come before the Council again at a future meeting, you could have that information. Apparently, and I could forward this email over to you as well.
That would be great.
But allegedly, it's been determined that Wind Energy Company would not be able to recoup their infrastructure costs and some other issues that is currently being worked on. So I'll forward that over to you probably by tomorrow, and you can look into that and have a response to us when it comes before the Council again.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Any other proponents wishing to speak on this item? Councilor on seat seven, Councilor Pelletier?
I just want to ask one question. Does the city get any money out of this?
Well, we have vacant mill buildings along the waterfront and vacant pieces of property that could be turned into productive uses and increase taxes. I think that you're going to see a large influx of offshore wind, and a lot of the areas, such as Brighton Point, will not be able to handle all of the needs, the infrastructure needs, the onshore needs. So, you know, we will see money in it because hopefully we'll be able to take some property that is underutilized and put it to its highest and best use.
Okay. That's good news. I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other proponents wishing to speak on this item? Hearing now. Any opponents? Calling all opponents. Hearing now. Motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearings.
Motion to close the hearings has been made by Counselor Kadeem, seconded by Councilor Pelletier. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn has been made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by Councilor Kadeem. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Committee on Finance will now be called to order, Madam Clerk.
Counselors Kadeem?
Here.
Joseph Camara?
Here.
Stephen Camara?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
LaLaby LeBeau?
Here.
Long?
Here.
Pelletier?
Here.
Poveras?
Here.
President Ponti?
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. First item on our agenda is citizens' input. One person has signed up to speak, Annabelle Perez of 148 Matt Cumber Avenue in Swansea. Is there a motion to waive the rules? Motion to waive the rules has been made by Councilor Joseph Camara, seconded by Councilor Stephen Camara. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Perez?
I want to be registered as opposed.
Consulor in seat six opposed. To waiving the rules, that is.
Members of the Council, good evening. I'm here to testify on item number 17 in regards to Serta bus transportation to Boston hospitals. I am a stage four cancer patient, and I'm required a trial to Boston at least once, twice, or three times a month. And I'm here to say that the transportation service to Boston from the Four River area and surrounding areas is woefully lacking. It costs me, on average, $125 per trip to Boston when I get it on the Peter Pan bus. You multiply that two or three times a month, it adds up to quite a bit of money. And, but anyway, I'm here to testify about the Serta bus service that's provided on Tuesdays from New Bedford and Thursdays from Four River on Cash Street between the hours of 10:00 and 2:00 in the afternoon. The bus arrives in Boston at 10:00 in the morning and leaves Boston to return to Four River at 2:00. That gives the patient, the medical patient that lives in this area, four hours to meet with all their doctors, their appointments, and take whatever tests is required of them, like an MRI or a CAT scan, which could be time consuming. So you've got to do that within four hours and be ready to board the bus at 2:00 to return to Four River. That's one of my concerns. I think that the amount of hours should be extended, should be at least six hours and if not eight. The number of days should be maybe twice a week instead of just one, which is on Thursday. My other concern is the location where the medical patients are picked up and dropped off. It's a parking lot on Cash Street, and this parking lot has no shelters to protect these passengers against inclement weather, in the winter when it's raining, snow, and summer when it's extremely hot. And there's no shelter and there is no public restroom. Medical patients undergoing treatment oftentimes have suffering side effects, and they have a need to go to the bathroom, which this parking lot does not afford. I was wondering, why can't Serta provide the drop off, the pickup and the drop off at the bus terminal? Bus terminal, I believe, is on Fourth Street. That terminal has shelter, has public restrooms. I can't see how, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't add any expense to Serta to switch the location from Cash Street to the bus terminal.
15 seconds.
I mean, I don't, I don't understand why it's not done that way. I'm sure they have their reasons, but as a medical patient, I think Cash Street is a very inconvenient location. And those are the two points that I wanted to make, and I'll leave you with that.
Thank you. Councilor on seat three, Councilor Stephen Camara?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've spoken with Mr. Perez, and I asked that this item be put on the agenda. It was beyond the deadline, so it's listed on the agenda as an item posted after the deadline. But I thought that Mr. Perez's request was certainly one that not only affects him, but I'm sure it affects other people who need to get to Boston for a medical treatment. I, in fact, bring someone on occasion to Boston, and I do that in my own vehicle, so it's not really pertinent to this. But if that person that I bring needed public transportation, he would be in the same position as Mr. Perez is in. And I have spoken to a member of the SERPAD Transportation Committee, and they're aware of shortcomings, if you will, in transportation from the South Coast, not just to Boston, but to other places. Now, Serta has been fortunately able to expand bus service into the evening hours, and it certainly seems to me that this is an issue that deserves attention. So when this item comes up, I'm going to ask that it be referred to the Committee on, I think appropriately, Public Works and Transportation, and then get representatives from Serta, SERPAD, certainly Mr. Perez, and any others who might be interested in trying to find a solution to this. Because it certainly seems that the solution is not insurmountable. To relocate the pickup and drop off point from Cash Street to the central bus terminal, that seems to be simple. I mean, why wouldn't that happen for the convenience of the passengers? Secondly, getting the transportation to be more in tune to the needs of the patient. So rather than providing a four-hour stay in Boston, and I know that once you're in Boston, it takes you time to get to the appointments and time to get served by the doctors if there's a backup. So there are many legitimate reasons why I think the City Council should bring in the appropriate authorities to see if we can provide better service for people who are facing the situation that Mr. Perez is facing. So I'm glad he brought it to our attention. I'm glad we were able to get it on the agenda for today. I do consider it to be something that we should act on in posthaste, and I do know that my Chairman of the Committee on Public Works and Transportation is very on top of bringing items to the, his subcommittee quickly, so I look forward to participating. I am a member of that committee, and assuming that that's the committee the Council decides to send it to, I'll be pleased to be able to be involved in this. And I would ask the Clerk to make note of, when that does happen, that we invite representatives from Serta and SERPAD at least, as well as Mr. Perez, to that meeting. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Counselor on seat one, Counselor Kadeem?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just going to talk a little bit about the process before Councilor on seat three spoke, so I'll, I can hold off and, you know, off of my suggestions then, but I think we need to at least have a conversation with the Administrator, Eric Russo, of Serta, and also find out who our representative is for the Serta Board. Between the City of Fall River and the City of New Bedford, we hold the most weighted average votes for any issue. So I think at a minimum, we should be able to at least switch the location from Cash Street to at least the bus terminal to make it more convenient for those passengers that need medical assistance. The other piece, too, is there is a demand response, so I think when it gets referred to the Committee on Public Works, we should invite Mr. Russo to the meeting, talk about the demand response system that they offer. And that may just be for within the various communities that Serta facilitates and offers transportation to, and it may not go as far out to Boston, but I think it's something that we should talk about, where people who actually have medical appointments can call Serta and have an actual bus brought to their house so that they can go to medical. Obviously, you have to plan that well out in advance, but that's at least a conversation that needs to be had in that subcommittee. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counsel. Anything further from the Council? Councilor on seat two, Councilor Camara?
Yeah, just one last point. He brings up an interesting point when he talks about the shelters at his bus stops. There's a lot of bus stops that don't have shelters, and students taking the buses to Durfee, and people driving to the industrial park or getting bus rides in industrial park. There are no shelters up in industrial park and other places as well, so I think we need to also be cognizant of the fact that they probably have to add some more shelters in a lot of their bus stops, because there's a lot of people that use them in the wintertime and snow, rain. It's troublesome. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Anything further from the Council? Hearing now. Thank you, Mr. Perez.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is transfers and appropriations. The Mayor in the order...
Council President?
Oh, I'm sorry. That is correct. Madam Vice President, we'll do a citation first, or citations.
If Mike Costa would please join me, and Kyle and Jacob. We also have three gentlemen from the school committee here, if they would come down as well. Mr. Corey, Mr. Martins, Mr. Coogan. I'm going to read a little while. I asked Mike Costa if he would help me to give citations to these two young gentlemen here, Kyle and Jacob, and not only did he say absolutely, he was kind enough to write up a very nice tribute to these two gentlemen. I'm going to read a little bit of it, but I'd like to ask Mike if he would speak about them individually. Tonight, we're here to acknowledge two amazing hilltoppers, two tremendous ambassadors to the great City of Fall River, and above all else, two wonderful human beings. Kyle and Jacob have spent their entire Durfee careers making our school community a better place through fundraising, spearheading school and community initiatives, planning events to bring people together, and leading school-based organizations for the betterment of every student who walks through our doors. Together, these two young men brainstormed an idea to bring our city together from all walks of life, from all backgrounds, and anyone and everyone who has Fall River in their veins across the country. The quote was captured in a tweet from soccer assistant coach and building para, Cory Cudero. "I am Fall River. The design captures who we are and where we come from, why we are proud to be Fall Riverites, and the vast potential we have when we are united in a common theme." A Facebook page was created, and the Herald News ran a front page story. Over 400 of these "I am Fall River" t-shirts have been sold, with individuals all around our city beaming from ear to ear when sporting their shirts. This initiative has helped fund student government initiatives, including helping the victims from the Four Winds Fire. "I am Fall River" is more than just a shirt, it's a movement.
I was honored to be asked by Counselor LeBeau to say a few words, put a few words together for these two amazing individuals, so I do have some words to say about Kyle and Jacob. I'll start with Kyle. Kyle is one of the most articulate, focused, and involved students I've ever had the pleasure of working with. Kyle's enthusiasm and energy is unmatched and can be felt in all corners of our school and community. Kyle's legacy at Durfee will be felt for generations to come through the contributions he has made. In the classroom, Kyle is a genuine and invested scholar. He is inquisitive, showing a thirst for knowledge and application that is unmatched among his peers. Kyle has consistently challenged himself with AP and honors level courses, rising to the level of expectations each class has set forth, building his academic capacity. Outside of the classroom, Kyle is a hilltopper through and through, bleeding the school colors of red and black. Kyle's involvement in leadership and our school community is extensive and impressive. Inducted member into the National Honor Society, member of the Green Team, seniors helping freshman mentoring program, the History Abroad Club, and the Sixth Man, varsity member of the boys soccer team, and he has served as his junior class president. Kyle was elected as student body president for his senior year, demonstrating the respect his peers hold for him and the trust he holds in making Durfee High School a better place. He has reinvigorated the student-run organization by making it a priority to improve our school community and our greater community. Some of the endeavors that Kyle has taken on as a leader this year include raising funds for the victims of the Four Winds Fire and establishing the Student Run Tutors for Toppers Initiative. Jacob's intellect, leadership, and empathy are all hallmarks of this impressive young man, providing a shining example of what a Durfee hilltopper should be, past, present, and future. In the classroom, Jacob is a thoughtful and conscientious scholar, pushing beyond provided expectations to get the most out of his education, taking on rigorous AP honors and dual enrollment courses. Outside of the classroom, Jacob is a pillar of our school community. Jacob's involvement is impressive, genuine, and essential to the vibrant and robust culture we have created at our school. Jacob is an athlete on the varsity boys soccer team and varsity volleyball team, a member of the senior helping freshman mentoring program, inducted member of the National Honor Society, captain of the sixth man club, social coordinator of the History Abroad Club, and elected student body treasurer of student government. Leadership is paramount in all that Jacob is involved with, garnering the respect and admiration of his peers, coaches, teachers, and advisors. As a person, Jacob is one of the most caring and compassionate individuals I have had the pleasure of working with. He is a family-oriented young man who has been instilled with solid core values that are apparent in all he does. Jacob's relentless work ethic, kind demeanor, exemplary communication skills, and strong leadership are the main reasons I am so proud of the man that Jacob has developed into. Very proud of both of you, and congratulations.
So we have City Council citations. Be it resolved that the City Council hereby extends its commendation to both Kyle and Jacob in recognition of your involvement, enthusiasm, and leadership throughout your career at BMC Durfee High School, and for your compassion and commitment to the City of Fall River. Congratulations. 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 Good job. Congratulations. Good luck. Congratulations. Good job. Congratulations. Good luck. Congratulations. 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 Congratulations.
All right, next item on our agenda is transfers and appropriations. It's going to be the Mayor ordering $1 million from General Fund Insurance Appropriations to the General Fund School Appropriation. That is referred back to us in priority matters in full council, but in the Committee on Finance for discussion tonight. Madam City Administrator? And Mrs. Sahadi, I know this was a rescheduled City Council meeting, I believe in the beginning of the year, when we established our schedule for the year. I think we, this was one of the meetings that we switched, and she already had a, a vacation planned, so she won't be joining us tonight. Mrs. Sahadi, Mrs. Viveras.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Council. So, the transfer is yet again a result of the fact that as we're beginning to close out the fiscal year, we recognize that the health insurance expense in the school department side is coming in again significantly under budget. In an interest of preserving net school spending on the school side, the transfer is before you to take funds from the health insurance appropriation and transfer it to the school appropriation, so that the school department has opportunity to spend the funds on educationally related expenditures. And I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Counsel on seat four, Counsel Kilby.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. When we had the dual meeting with the City Council and the School Committee, it was stated that the, the unions were very cooperative, to use the exact quote, and they took steps necessary, played a big role in the health insurance savings, which has been in the past, budget busters, so to speak. So, I'm wondering, and I'd like you, if you could, explain what steps the unions specifically did take to allow this to occur.
Excellent. Thank you for the question. I always appreciate any opportunity to, to give credit to the Public Employee Committee, and also the Insurance Advisory Committee. The Public Employee Committee consists of presidents, representatives from each of the city's unions. They have worked very cooperatively and, and in a very collaborative basis with the administration, looking at ways to reduce health insurance costs. And you're correct, Counselor, it is a budget buster item. When you consider that you're at approximately $50 million every year for health insurance, it's a very large number. And it is net school spending eligible, hence the necessity for the transfer tonight to allow them to spend those funds. But the committee had worked very closely with the administration. There were a number of changes made throughout the recent fiscal years, not the least of which was to phase out some rather expensive health insurance plans that were currently in place, when we recognized that there were alternative plans that would be available to the employees at a far lesser cost. And I would stress that when we're able to reduce the health insurance cost, because 75% of the cost is borne by the city, but 25% is borne by the employees and retirees, then anytime we can save money, we're also benefiting the individual employees as well. So, in addition to restructuring some of the plans that were available, most recently, we made a decision, which I would venture to say is, we're probably one of the few communities in the entire state that has taken this, this initiative, and we have actually carved out the prescription portion of the health insurance. This was important, because then we were able to competitively find a vendor who was able to assist us in providing those services. And the new vendor that we've identified, again, has been very helpful in reducing our costs. We're estimated, it was about $2.4 million on pharmaceuticals. And that's done in large part, not changing any prescriptions, certainly allowing employees to have all the prescriptions that they need. But the new plan now allows the city to receive rebates from the pharmaceutical companies, any incentives that might be offered, and previously, those were not returned to the city by the former provider. So, again, and, and of course, whenever you make changes to health insurance, and I know we're probably all been subjected to these kinds of decisions over the years, it, it can be somewhat concerning. People want to make sure that any change provides them the same health insurance that they've been accustomed to, that they're gonna provide, we're gonna provide the same access to that health insurance, and certainly that their individual costs are not gonna increase. So, here again, not only did the PEC assist us in developing alternative health insurance programs, but they were also very good at helping us inform both our employees and retirees of the changes that were being made, and how those changes, we're not gonna create any major disruption to them. So, they were an excellent vehicle for communications as well, so that I believe that we've made these transitions with, with very, very small and limited disruption in the plans.
And that's obviously included the, the, the school department's participation.
Absolutely.
And we have members of the School Committee, and the years that I was on the School Committee during collective bargaining or collaborative bargaining, health insurance was always a huge, like you said, a huge issue and a difficult thing to, to change. So, kudos to the School Committee that negotiates that contract with, with all the school, school unions, and I believe the School Department has the largest amount of employees in this city, if I'm, I might be wrong on that.
Very large number, yes.
So, it makes sense, the, the transfer, obviously, going back to, to the School Department. So, I yield. Thank you for the answers.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor on seat one, Counsel Akadeem.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do support the transfer, but I was just quickly looking at the quarter three budget report, and just looking under the other governmental and the insurance line item. It's showing that we have the roughly over $40 million a budget, then we have the $1 million transfer coming out. So, the revised budget of $39,63,256. If you take 75% of that, and I know we're, we're just under 75% of our health insurance costs, but if you do take the 75% of that and then subtract what we've actually had through the end of March, which should be the 75%, that's roughly, that's exactly $250,000 savings. So, I'm not sure that we're actually showing or projecting another $1 million to be transferred. So, I just got a question in terms of that.
All right. Just, I'd have to find, Counselor, I think in your report, it was showing that health insurance was at around an overall of 74%?
Yeah, 74. So, I'm on, I'm on page three, so 74.4%.
Page three of the...
First...
The, the actuals?
The actuals, yep.
And if I understand your question correctly, then, then Counsel, so, first of all, the...
I was just trying to figure out what, what the savings, right? So, the difference between what we actually had versus what we should have had at 75%. So, just taking the revised budget, multiplying that by 75%, and taking the delta between what we've actually spent, it's only showing $250,000 savings.
All right. So, what's happened is, we've had a decrease on the school side of, now we're estimating $2 million, but there has been some increase on the city side. So, you're not seeing a dollar-for-dollar change, if, if that's, if that's the nature of your question. But we are showing that the schools are now keeping track of their health insurance on an actual claims basis. So, we were able to determine that the actual money being spent by the school employees and retirees was actually coming in less, not quite as, as much of a reduction as on the city side, so that may be accounting for. And the other thing I would add, which I think may be what you're alluding to as well, when we actually budgeted the health insurance at the beginning of the year, we were aware of the savings that we were gonna be achieving. So, I don't know if that addresses your concern.
So, the, so the $40 million that was budgeted, that assumed the savings were, because we...
Again, that's the city's share of the total cost of the health insurance.
Right. With, with the schools, so city and school.
Correct, yeah, but not the employee portion, right.
So, when you, how are you making transfers? Well, I guess it's not, it's not an even basis, right? So, I guess I would, would ask you if maybe you had a surplus in the health, health insurance trust fund, the employee trust fund?
We, we transfer...
I mean, the employer trust fund, I'm sorry, not the employee, employer.
The employer, yeah. We transfer the health insurance appropriation into the health insurance trust fund, is, is where it resides, if that's, if that's your question.
Well, I, the question again is just that when I'm looking at 75% of the $39 million, we're only showing a savings of $250,000. So, if we make the transfer of $1 million, we're gonna be short $750,000 if the actuals stay in line of what we have up to March 31st.
Well, all right. So, I think I may be able to address it this way. As you know, we, we bill, and I know because you're familiar with it, we, we actually are two months in arrears. So, we're actually, this March 31st is probably only seven months, but based on the activity to date, we're actually projecting out. We won't have the final bill for the current fiscal year 2019 until August. So, there is, in terms of the actuals, there is some projection that's, that's ongoing here because of the fact that we don't have the full annual expenditure. And as I said, the school department expenditure was down by $2 million that we're comfortable projecting now, but the city side was, had actually increased by $1 million. So, you're not, you're not looking at the total amount of reduction purely based on the school's activity, because the city's activity was, is running a little bit different. Overall, it's gonna be down $1 million at the year end, based on our projections. But again, we're seeing it's disproportionate savings, in that the schools are seeing a greater savings in the city side.
I guess if we could just, if, we could just do a further look into, I'm just curious to see what the employer trust fund has for a balance, to see if there's a savings.
I can get that number for you, Counsel.
And then, because I, I mean, the initial, just on an initial look, we should be close to almost 2% lower than what we actually are now, right? So, we're at, we're showing a .6% savings, I guess, if you would, through March. So, you really would have to times that by three, that'd get you 1.8, so roughly just under 2%. So, I would expect that we'd be 2% lower than what we really are. So, if we, I just want to make sure that we're not transferring $1 million and then having a shortfall later on. That's, and you, and you may, and you may, might as well have it in the, in the employee, employer trust fund, because you've already made some transfers there. I just want to make sure that that's the case.
Correct. We, we move it from, the appropriation moves from there into the employee trust fund. Yes, that's correct. But I can get you the balance in that account, Counsel.
Okay. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. On seat six, Counsel Law.
First, I'd like to congratulate everybody on the hard work that they did here in realizing these savings. But when I look at the FY '19 appropriation, I just, in the interest of transparency, I, I read this, and it's just, the numbers are just amazing. Could you just go through that and tell me how that all works?
Are you looking at the actual transfer, Counsel?
Yes. It shows the insurance appropriation at $40,954.
Just need to put my hands on it, Counsel. You have it.
You can have it, yeah.
I have it. Yeah, just need to find it. Here we go. So, the original appropriation for the insurance, the health insurance, was $40,954,256. What you're seeing on this particular amount is the $1 million transfer, which is bringing the adjusted balance down to $39,954,256. And that $1 million is moving, again, from the insurance appropriation, the health insurance appropriation, to school appropriation. That's gonna enable the school department to spend that money on educational-related items. So, the original or revised appropriation for the schools, $99,488,595. And that, because of the $1 million transfer in, the adjusted balance, $100,488,595.
So, when those two are together, that's the total appropriation for school department, is that correct?
Yes, the total amount that we, that we appropriated is the $100 million, yeah.
And that comes out to be $140 million.
If, if you add in the additional funds, Counsel, is that what you're referring to? Yes. We don't, the health insurance lives on the separate, right, lives on the city side.
But I'm just saying, just for transparency, when we look at this, this is the numbers we're talking about. $140 million, one year. Is that correct?
I'll trust your exact number, Counsel.
It's not exact, I'm just...
Exactly, right, exactly, yeah.
And how much is the city budget, just roughly, one year?
Let me get my numbers. The total appropriation, $281,989,000.
No, I'm saying without, without school.
Without the schools. Okay, so we actually appropriated on the, in the approved budget, $106,144,678. So, if you take the, the total city expenditures appropriated, $175,844,334.
So, this is about roughly, 50% of the budget is going to the school department, is that correct? Total appropriation, roughly. Then you take police and fire. That probably takes out another 35%, somewhere in there, 30%?
You could say, yeah. You're good with your percentages, Counsel.
And only 20%, 20% is left over for basically operation of this building.
Oh, I understand you. Yes, yes, Counsel, clearly, right. You have, once you, once you subtract the police fire and the school department, yeah, the remaining amount...
And, and those numbers are just incredible numbers. That's all I'm saying. It's, it's a lot.
They are.
And by and large, the school department is taking the biggest bite of the budget.
Correct, Counsel.
Okay, that's all I want. I rest. I...
Here you yield.
Thanks. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Anything further from the Council on this item? Hearing none, thank you very much. It's already referred. It's in our full council agenda, so there's nothing more that we need to discuss on this, going to the next item. And the Committee on Finance is a discussion with the Administrator of Community Utilities regarding the Westport Intermunicipal Agreement for Wastewater Services. Mr. Sullivan?
Has this already been referred?
It was referred to the Finance on the March 5th. I don't think it's in full council, Madam Clark, is it?
No, Mr. President, it's just in Finance.
It's just in Finance. So, if you want to vote, it would need to be referred tonight. Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you. Good evening. We have before you a proposed intermunicipal agreement for wastewater services for the town of Westport. This is to replace a prior agreement. We've updated the agreement to be consistent with the agreements with our other towns. Some of the big items are that the cost for sewer use for the towns is automatically marked up 55% above what the Fall River rate is. In addition, we have an impact fee for any new connections to the system. An initial capital fee is charged. One of the prime drivers to get this moving along is La France Enterprises is proposing to construct a second hotel on their property. The prior agreement didn't have sufficient capacity. So, we're hopeful that this moves forward. The, if the hotel is constructed as expected, this agreement would provide us with a capital fee of $9,000 for sewer. The existing water agreement would provide another $9,000 capital fee to the city. In addition, the increase in flow, which is estimated to be 9,000 gallons per day for sewer, would increase the annual payments of sewer to the city by about $36,000 per year. And under the water agreement, if, when the new hotel is constructed, it would increase the payments to the city for water for another $23,000 per year. So, the agreement is consistent with the prior ones that you've passed. As I've stated a few times over the past few years, one of our long-term hopes is expanded sales to the other towns to continue to increase our revenue, to try to minimize the impacts on the Fall River customers. So, I recommend approval and answer any questions you may have.
Where exactly they're building this hotel?
Adjacent, just to the south of the existing hotel, Route 6.
Oh, okay. Yep, yep, yep. Counselor on seat one, Counsel Akadeem.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just gonna ask, and you answered the question, the impact fees, if you anticipated anything. So, outside of that new hotel development, there's no other additional tie-ins that you're expecting?
Not yet. Would love to have more, and I've certainly met with Westport and at some of their selectmen meetings numerous times over the years. Customers... Customers in Westport want more sewage. Westport generally doesn't have the capital funds to install the sewers to expand it out to those customers. So any, any capital work done within the town of Westport is all of their cost. All we do is accept the sewage as it crosses the town line. I, I think in the long term, as septic systems continue to fail and any commercial expansion on Route six continues, that there is a need, there are customers that want it. But Westport, at this point, although they've done some master planning, I, I don't think they're quite ready to start to make that investment, but I think it'll happen in the future.
How, how's our capacity in terms for the stormwater, I mean, the sewer?
Our capacity is good. So our current treatment plant has a dry weather capacity of thirty-one million gallons per day. We take in, on average, depending on the groundwater levels, somewhere between twenty and twenty-five million gallons per day. So we've got about five to six to sell wet weather. We do go up to full capacity, but with the CSO project, we're braced to do that. So sanitary, dry weather flow coming from other towns. You're talking on the magnitude, our hopes are fifty to a hundred thousand gallons per day, which is a lot of revenue for us, but it's relatively minimal impact on the capacity of the sewer system.
And then, just in, in terms of the new development for the hotel, the pump station, is that, I guess, is it in good condition? Or do you think there's going to be any need for capital improvements to that?
I expect there will be need, there will be a need for capital improvement and expansion, but that's all Westport. So that, the current existing pump station that was built around nineteen eighty-four sits in the parking lot of White's. It services currently White's Restaurant. The current hotel and the small strip shops right across, strip mall, right across the street. I expect it'll need some upgrade and expansion, but that's all on Westport and La France Enterprises.
Will they be working with us in terms of the specs that we want to see for the pump station?
Yes, and I've got some language, especially on emergency response, because Westport currently doesn't have a sewer staff because they're so small. So we've added some language that they have to have an emergency plan in place. Over the past few years, we've assisted, if there's been a break in the force main, just over the line. As an example, last year, Mass DOT was installing a sign and they put it right through the force main on the Westport side. We assisted and coordinated. We didn't have to pay any cash out of our pockets, but our, our staff assisted in helping their contractor get it done. So there's some language that they have, have to have an emergency action plan. If their pump station or any of their piping systems breaks, and they're cooperative to work with us.
Then the other thing, the contract that we had, I've seen some signatures, but I didn't see legal sign-off to approve as to form. Did they review that?
I've sent it to the law department, so they haven't signed yet. We, we don't start the signing process until it's approved. But yes, it was sent to the law department, and it's very similar and consistent to what we have with Tiverton and Freetown for intermunicipal agreements.
Okay, so you don't anticipate any problems once we go through that? All right, I yield, thank you.
Thank you, councillor, in seat four, councillor Kilby.
Just one quick question, just popped into my head. The fees that we're getting from this agreement, can you compare that, what we're charging, to our average resident? Follow what I'm saying?
Yes, so the sewer use fee.
Is it comparable, or is it?
Far, we're marked up fifty-five percent for the towns.
Okay, okay.
So, so as an example, the current sewer use rate in Fall River is five dollars and thirty-eight cents per one-hundred cubic feet. We, we measure in CCF, which is seven-hundred-and-forty-eight gallons. So Fall River resident, commercial entity, or residential customer gets charged five dollars and thirty-eight cents. If you're in Westport, we charge eight dollars and thirty-four cents.
Okay, that's good to know, I didn't know that.
That's the fifty-five percent markup.
And I believe that's, that's important for the, the people to know out there who are watching this meeting that obviously we're getting a larger, you know, fee from, from people outside the community.
Yes, and it's a good revenue source, and we hope over the years and decades that that will expand.
Very good, thank you, for your good work, Terry.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anything further from the council? Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to refer?
Motion to refer.
Motion to refer to full council has been made by councillor Kilby, seconded by councillor Long. Discussion, haring none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next order of business is a resolution to discuss with the administration Director of Community Maintenance and Director of Facilities Maintenance regarding electrical needs at the gates of the city.
Good evening, councillors.
Good evening.
So it was a resolution to add some electric to the city gates. In the resolution, it asked for a four-hundred-amp single-phase service. In talking with the board of the Day of Portugal, they're looking for a four-hundred-amp three-phase service, one-twenty, two-oh-eight type of service. In going out there with a couple of contractors to take a look at what the cost may be, what we may have to do, we find that we approximately four-hundred-feet worth of piping of four-inch going out there. There are several areas that we may need to cross of water lines, gas, things of that nature. We did a little bit more investigation. We find that the state, when they put in the highway, put in a, a gas line, a water line, and, and a electric line. Looking at the electric line for the service of what we're looking for, they put in a two-and-a-half-inch pipe for the service. That's a little undersized for the four-hundred-amp service that we may be looking for. So looking at that, if, I think they did, and I, again, the state, I want to say, I want to think that they did this in looking at a two-hundred-amp service going up towards the gates, or towards the back of the gates. So in the resolution with Mr. Cadine was looking for, and with the board from the Day of Portugal, they're looking for the three-phase. I'm getting from the contractors that that is, seems to be an extreme amount of power for what they may be doing. So what we're looking to do is come in June, when they have their event, is to go in and set meters to see exactly what they're going to use in power. So we'll know exactly what we're going to have to use or put in for this, this service. We've got with National Grid, when the state put in the underground, they tied into a local manhole. We've got National Grid going out there to verify exactly if there's some primaries or secondaries in that hall, which would then allow, tell us exactly how much power is in that particular manhole. We feel, looking at what the street and where it's servicing to the gas company and some of the other marine museum, things of that nature, we feel that there's enough power there, but again, we're going to verify it with National Grid. Looking at what some of the contractors were looking at, we could possibly be in, in the hundred-thousand-dollar range, not to exceed that. If the power comes to find that the power is reduced, and we could possibly use the state's conduit, we could probably dramatically cut this cost in half.
Before I recognize the councillors, raise your hand, councillor who sponsored the resolution, councillor in seat one, councillor Cadine.
Thank you, Mr. President. So in terms of, what's the turnaround time to, if we were to do that? So once, once you identify how much electric is needed?
We could probably, before the end of the season, before, before we hit the winter months, we would do it. It'd be a little more difficult to do now if we're going to have events there. We have events in June, I think we have another event in August. I even think the Narrows might even have an event sometime late September, mid-September. So for digging trenches through all the grassy area and stuff, if we had vehicles, people walking, we could have a little bit of a mud pit. So being able to do it before the fall, I'd like to do it before the fall so I could plant the grass and have all the grass grow back in before the winter months and be ready for spring.
Now, is the Day of Portugal, that, that group there, do they draw the most electric?
Yes, they would, so far, they're the biggest event. When we had the boating events, there were some, but they didn't use any really of our stuff. They might have had some small power usages, which they, we, there's already currently a two-hundred-amp service there that services the gates, the lights, and things like that that are in there, the decorative lighting that goes around. And then we utilize that for the Day of Portugal for where the food services, where we set that up. So we utilize that two-hundred-amp service. But yeah, they are probably the largest consumption of it right now.
I guess, because what, what I don't want to see happen is, is that we go out there and then we're basing something off of Day of Portugal, and then obviously, they may be downsizing what they're using for electric because they've got to bring in their own generators, and it might be a, a cost initiated with them. So I, I would hope that we, if, if the Narrows is continuing to, to look at, at that as a, a facility, maybe make sure, or see what they might need in terms of electric. Really, just want to make sure that's, it's, we do this once so that we have all the electric that is absolutely needed to host any type of event there. And then also, I know, I know originally talking to some of the folks of the Day of Portugal, they were concerned about the fountain that's located there and how it hampers their ability to set up stage. And I know that they were talking, especially some of the, the original founders of the, the group that had, that led the way for the Gates of the City, potentially talking about removing the fountain to, to kind of give it a little bit more access and more ability to, to put stages up.
Yeah, we're currently talking about that. We're talking about lowering it to be flush with the asphalt, leaving the curving, but making it flush with the asphalt, putting a, a concrete inner part to it. So you still have that, that look there, that turnaround.
Right.
But getting it to the ground level so that anybody that sets up an event there, they can utilize that. We've also talked about, when we do this service, we would also be able, if we do the, if it is a four-hundred-amp service, we'll be able to pull another two-hundred-amp service. So we want to put two boxes in, and looking at this, we were going to put one that would be near the Water Street, right off the plantings, almost direct line with the other two-hundred-amp services, but just on the opposite side of the gates, so that any events that they have there in that grass would have a full two-hundred-amp service on that side as well. And then the full four-hundred-and-eighty would be at the crown or the head of the gates, up towards the highway. And then that way there, whatever, most of the bands seem to like to set up on the asphalt, it's more stable than the grass, and set up over there, so that, that, that way there, then they could just utilize it right off and into the back of the stage.
Now, you, you said the state laid a conduit?
Yeah, yeah, we did a little more investigation and find that the state came from the sidewalk on Water Street and followed it all the way around the highway ramp, and, but brought it straight across to the top where the flags are. So it doesn't go all the way to the back, it ends there, but it's a two-and-a-half-inch pipe.
Okay.
So I'm talking with the electrical.
What do you need for?
Four-inch, if we're going to go with the four-eighty. The contractors are saying a four-inch, maybe a three-and-a-half, or it would be the best to use to be able to pull it that far. We'd have to put a couple of handholds in between, but being able to reach it that far at four-hundred feet.
Okay. All right, so is, is this something you think you can get back to the, to the council in terms of, I guess, if you, if there's any additional renovations, all, like a one-stop shop? This is what we're looking to do, the total cost associated with that, so we can kind of address it? But I, again, I just urge you folks not to just, not just the Day of Portugal, but, you know, obviously the Narrows, any other groups that may be utilizing that facility, what their, their needs are in terms of electric.
Yeah, and that's why we're looking at putting another two-hundred-amp box near the street. So anybody that did set up in there, we'd have it that way, so if they didn't need the full four-hundred-amp, they would be able to do that. And then that, also, in that four-hundred-amp cabin, it, there would also be, that would be another two-hundred-amp. So with the four-hundred, you could split it in half. So you could actually have two-hundred-amp, we'd have three areas of two-hundred-amp on, on site.
So you'd be able to get back to us, so if Day of Portugal's June?
Yes.
So by the end of June?
Yes.
So I think we only, well, we, in June, we meet more than, we meet more than once in June, so.
But yeah, that day.
Or at least, or at least by July?
Yeah, that day, when we, when we have that, right after that, we'd be able to definitely get back to the council. As I said, we're going to put some meters on it and stuff, see exactly what they are. We'll, we'll definitely talk with the Narrows and stuff and see what type of events that they may have. Like I said, the only other event that I saw was when we had the boats come into town and stuff like that, but they didn't use that much power. They didn't have any bands or anything of that size that, that the Day of Portugal and maybe the Narrows may have.
Okay.
I think the only other thing affecting timing, though, too, councillor, is the, we do have to rely on National Grid to get down into that manhole and let us know what the capacity is there, too. But otherwise, July should be fine.
Okay. I yield.
Thank you, councillor, in seat seven, councillor Palatier.
Thank you. How long has the Days of Portugal been going there?
I want to, I want to say that this is maybe their fourth or fifth year.
And what's the cost to them when they come down?
A cost to them when they come to?
Do they lease it, they rent it, they get it for free?
No.
No, what?
They, they get it for free. There's no leasing, no rental.
Nothing. And, you know, they come to Fall River, do they make money?
I'm sure they cover their costs.
Would expect, council.
There's food.
I would hope so, too. I mean, they come to Fall River, use all our stuff, sanitation, pickup. Now they want the electric, now they want the fountain to be lowered. Come on, give us a break. We've got nice stuff in Fall River. Fountain's in the way, you want to move that, too. It doesn't make sense to me. I mean, they don't pay anything at all, so now we're going to bring in a three-phase or whatever. What's the cost of that? Are they willing to pay some money? Have you talked to them?
Well, we have, and there is some, some things in the work about them taking care of the, the cost of the fountain. There's a, when we get into a little bit more of this, of the electric, since that, they're on the, the committees that are there, are a couple of large construction companies, that we may be able to utilize them, that they'll maybe be able to bring in their, their backhoes or that to dig the trenches for us and things of that nature, to, to reduce the cost of, of this.
I don't think it's fair when they come to Fall River, utilize everything. You want to give them more electric, all well and good. Let them pay for some of the stuff, this is crazy. The Holy Ghost, the same thing. Who's paying for the electric there? You know, they bring the lines in, are they paying there? They paying rent?
They pay some permit fees and that, right?
Yeah, so some pay, some don't. It doesn't, it just doesn't make any sense, the taxpayers of Fall River. I mean, it's nice, they all come to Fall River, come on down to Fall River, no problem. Make a lot of money, take it wherever you want to take it. Don't leave it in Fall River. You know, taxpayers are going to pay for everything. It's not right, it's just not right. There's got to be another system that we can do, say, hey, you guys got to come up with some money here. You know, it, it, you know, I don't know what it's going to cost, I guess you've got no idea as well?
Well, no, councillor, we could probably put in a permitting fee to u, to utilize the gates, and something that this council could do.
I think if they like, and we can go from. It's something that we could sit down with them, I mean, and talk it over. I mean, you know, what are you going to do? I mean, don't take everything out, bring something in. Look, we're going to do this, we're going to do this. And, but that's not the case. So I, I don't think it's right, and it's probably a good idea, my seat number one, but, you know, it's the money, it's the money. Who's going to pay? And who's going to pay the bill for the electric, besides the city of Fall River, right? We're going to pay to put it in, we're going to pay to lower the fountain, we're going to do everything. And then we get the bill, we're going to pay for that, too. And then they take all their stuff, they leave town, and they do what they have to do. Take their money and spend it somewhere, someplace else. So I'm not comfortable with it, I think it's just no good for the taxpayers. I yield.
Thank you. Just had to put in information, who owns the Gates of the City? Is it city property?
Yes.
It is city property, okay, thanks. Just wanted to double-check on that. Councillor in seat six, councillor Long.
My questions have been answered.
Thank you. Councillor in seat three, councillor Stephen Kamire.
Well, Mr. President, that was my initial question. Because I, I, I understand, I believe, in fact, that whole area was constructed with private funds, wasn't it? Wasn't that constructed predominantly with private funds?
Yes, council.
And there were plaques there with the names of the people that.
Correct.
That did the work there, and, and the gates were donated by the Ponte de, City of Ponte de la Gata, correct? As a sister-city relationship?
Yes, yes, there was a very large infrastructure investment made by the private parties.
So, you know, we're, we're not really talking about a single entity. We're not talking about the Day of Portugal, we're not doing this for the Day of Portugal. We're doing this to advance a waterfront gathering place for the community. And it, I, I wasn't sure that it was owned by the city. It, it is, in fact, that property is owned by the city?
I believe it is, sir.
Well, I don't know, I believe, whenever somebody tells me I believe, I think there's also a possibility that.
No, it's, it's, it's city-owned, council.
Let me ask you again, is it, is it owned by the city? Do we have a, a de facto proof that it's property that is public land owned by the city?
Point of, point of information.
Councillor, in seat one, your point of information?
It, it is owned by the city. I mean, in fact, when we were doing the Lower End of Seventy-Nine, the state had to come to the city to get the okay to make changes to that location, and it's absolutely city-owned.
Thank you. Councillor in seat three.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Is it under the jurisdiction of the park department?
No, it's not considered a park.
So what is it considered?
Just considered the gates, it's not considered a park, so it's under facilities maintenance.
Well, it's a unique kind of animal, then, isn't it? So, so, so that's why, if somebody wanted to go to a park, they would have to have permits and go through the park board and. and go through the park board and pay a fee to use that park. Is that true?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And the fees are rather heavy, aren't they? Some groups have not been able to have events in our parks because of the cost of using the parks. Do you have an estimate of like, if someone wanted it for like a three day event, what would the cost be for a group to use a park?
I couldn't tell you what their fees.
We have to get that information for you, councillor, just to be accurate.
But as far as I know, it's not an inexpensive proposition. I'm involved with a group that is looking to have an event, and they're finding it not feasible to have it on a public facility, whether it's Heritage State Park or one of our city parks, because of the costs that are affiliated. And then, and then there are also additional costs, so you have to hire police officers and other, and particularly if alcohol is served, and some of the events, there are, alcohol is served, so then, then you've got that expense, which is very, gets, can get high. I'm not sure what the hourly rate is for a police officer, but it's up there. And you have to have a minimum of four hours, and if it's an all day event, you have to have police there all day. So I've always thought that, and I, and I did realize that the, that the gates was a unique piece of property, that it's different than the parks, it's different than Heritage State Park, and it really should be a focal point of many activities. So I'm, I'm very much in support of bringing the energy necessary to make that a focal point of community activities. And it's not about a single group using it. I think that we could have many groups using it, whether it's the Narrow Center for the Arts or the Day of Portugal activity, and there are other groups that have used it through the years. And I, and I think that that's excellent. We, that is probably the most visible and the most convenient kind of space for these kinds of uplifting waterfront activities. And we don't do enough of that. We really don't bring enough people. Every week we should bring people. I'm pleased with Monica Suza's efforts to do the truck, truck events there. So that's, that's good. So I guess I would just encourage us to, you know, to not be short sighted and not necessarily even base our investment on a single group. Because the Day of Portugal, they, they have a great event, but they don't draw, they don't draw 50,000 people per day. They, they may draw 50,000 people over the whole weekend, but that place could accommodate many more people for much bigger events. So I, I encourage you to continue. I, I commend my colleague in seat one for submitting this. I think it's a great investment. This is not a cost, as I say. This is an investment so that we can bring more people into the community, have them come here and see this as a destination for fun, for waterfront activity. Go to the, and I know that there are, Sandy Dennis and, and I'm involved with her group, developing that area as a waterfront walking district with, with money coming from the state to assist us in moving in that direction. It, it is the connecting location, if you will, between the great investment that's being made by the Lund family on the waterfront and the great investment that's being made by the Battleship Cove folks and the Narrow Center for the Arts and, and then even beyond that, down to the Cove. So all of that area really should be looked at as Fall River's future. We've, I think, been talking about that for decades, that that is really Fall River's future, is, is developing that whole waterfront area, and the gates are really a big, big part of that. I'm hopeful, I know we are, we're a city that has trouble with fountains, but I'm still optimistic that, that a fountain will be a piece of that. Is that the intent? You said that they're going to bring down the barriers?
That particular area.
Still be a water feature?
Yeah, that particular area being in the roadway where they like to set up, being that, again, sitting on the grass is a little unstable, but they usually have to build over the top of it, some sort of wood structure and that, to be able to put their stage on it. And yes, they've talked about it with some of the other committee members, the founding members of it, and, you know, said that that's not out of the equation. They don't mind, they want to see a fountain, but maybe put it like where the, the flags are, either in front of the flags or behind the flags on the, on the main part of the gates versus being in, right in the middle of the venue or that they may, other people may want, even in the future.
Now, at one time, and I, and I know that I wasn't in favor of, of having a shell constructed in Heritage State Park because I didn't want to see us putting our Fall River funds into a state facility, because there have been times when the state has been strapped for money, that they've talked about selling their Heritage State Parks around the state. And that's happened within the past couple of decades where there was a consideration to sell Heritage State Park and turn it over to the private sector and let them operate it. So I wasn't in favor of putting a Hatch Shell or a, I guess it's called a Hatch Shell in Boston because it's named after somebody named Hatch. But I hope people know what I mean. What's the, what's the generic name? What's the generic name for a musical?
Amphitheater? The amphitheater, the shells?
The amphitheater would be the whole thing, but it's basically the stage, which would also save groups there from having to bring in portable stages if they could function the way in, on the Esplanade in Boston, when they do, where they do the Fourth of July events and they do many other events, and they use that shell. Is that dead? Is there, is there no city interest in? Because I think at the time, the idea was not to kill the shell idea, was just to consider building it at another location. Is there, is there still any possibility of using some money? And I, and I understand at that time, the state was going to give us.
Exactly, councillor.
Part of the revenue.
Yeah, there was, it was a grant, it was a 50-50 match. So those funds are no longer available. Maybe they could be resurrected, but that was the timing of that, that we were able to get 50% of the cost from the state.
Well, I would encourage us, because the state has got some significant funds, and they are funding that area as a, as a walking district cultural center. If we could, rather than trying to just make things easier to put portable stages there, if we could, in fact, in, in the design, this is when I wish we had our architect on board, so that we could have him advise us or she advise, advise us on landscaping that area to incorporate a shell, incorporate a fountain, incorporate appropriate seating and all of that there. So I would encourage, as you pursue this, to maybe connect with our state legislative delegation. Mike Roderick's happens to have some influence, I understand, in Boston, particularly as chairman of Ways and Means, is that what he's chairman of?
Correct, councillor.
And I think chairman of Ways and Means means you pretty much determine where the state puts its money, or largely, I don't know, I may be giving Mike more credit than, but, but Mr. Roderick's is a significant force. And I, I have a feeling that if we sat down with Mr. Roderick's and Carol Fioler and Alan Silvier and Paul Schmidt and Pat Haddad, who is right up there in the top as well, that maybe we could generate some state funds to help, to help make this thing a showcase, not just getting an electrical conduit, which is great, but also to get the whole place evolved into the kind of center showcase place for Fall River's future activities. So I don't, I don't want this to, to go slow. Maybe we should put it in permanently into a committee of the council to take a look at this, but, and to keep on it. But I, again, commend my colleague in seat one for bringing it to the forefront, and I am certainly supportive of investing in this area to make it the centerpiece, the showcase of Fall River's waterfront, at least from the public sector. Lots of private money going into the waterfront. We should be paralleling that private money by doing something very special at the gates. So I encourage your effort toward this end. I yield.
Thank you. Consul in seat two, Consul Kamara.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, there was a phenomenal committee that built that entire structure, and I think Mr. Little Silver was part of that, and no one was looking to give him any money to build it, and now we're going to have them pay for electrical work, and I don't think it's fair. I agree, my colleague, I think it's a good idea, it's a good resolution. One of the things, you said it's 200 amps there now?
There is a 200 amp service on the north side of the gates that services when we do any type of events, we build the pavilions there.
And they want 400 amps?
Yes, they want 400 amps, and we're being told by their sangha, it's 400 amps, three phase.
Have you seen what goes on there at the concerts they have?
Yes.
I have 200 amps going to my house. I couldn't put that kind of concert out in my yard. So I think we should not wait to see what they're going to use, June.
Well, I.
They need 400 amps.
Right. There's no question on that. It's whether it's three phase or it's, or if it's, if it's single phase and exactly what they're using. Again, we want to build it not only just for them, but we want to build it.
Correct.
Future going forward. They may not use that 400 amp full on, but they may, then the next person may need that three phase. So if we could do it that way, that's what we would like to do. We just don't want to underbuild it.
I think we should do, and I think, I agree with my colleagues, they say we should fund it as well and not worry about where the money goes. The money stays here, it's local money. People coming from outside, they're coming to Fall River, they're not leaving Fall River, and no one's going to move that location, right? That location will always be in Fall River.
Yep.
Those gates are going to always be there until they fall down or someone blows them up. But we should not worry about investing in there because, give them what they want, three phase, 400 amps, not a lot. I mean, it's going to cost money, but you can't, I have 200 amps going into my house. I couldn't put the kind of fund.
Well, I think the additional consideration, though, councillor, is, as Mr. Gallagher was mentioning, it's, it's not possible for us to really complete the work prior to the event on, I think it's June 8th, 9th, in that range. So we, we have the opportunity to do the metering, just to confirm, you know, the amount of power that we're going to need.
How long will it take if we start it today? How long will it take to put, run the wire? I mean, National Grid can't do it?
Well, it's, it's not that. I mean, we, we could probably do it in, you know, a couple of weeks. Depending on what, if we could get the contractors to help us that are part of that committee and things of that.
They certainly will.
But the thing of it is, is that we're now leaving it where the points of the grass to grow, or we could have a mud issue. There's going to be a lot of people at that event, and being such a short time, we're not going to get anything to, to kind of be back there. We could be in an area where now we just kind of make more of a mess of it.
How wide are the trenches you're going to dig to bring the amps in?
It's wide of a, as a backhoe bucket, which.
You're going to put a four inch conduit in there?
Yes.
How much room do you need to dig a trench for a four inch conduit?
They can use the trench buckets. Again, we may end up hitting something that, that is unforeseen. There's water lines in there, there's electric lines in there, there's gas lines that are in there.
I think, too, again, just another reminder, because we've, we've had this issue in the past, we do need to rely on National Grid to get down into that manhole and give us a formal assessment as to what capacity is in there. So it isn't like this is all within the city's immediate control. I mean, we have.
Have you made that request of them yet?
Yes. Mr. John Dougherty, who's the engineer for National Grid.
At what timeframe do you say he needs to give you that assessment?
Hopefully, he'll get back to me this week.
So you say within a week?
He'll get back to him to talk about what it is he wants him to assess, and then, again, councillor, we're, we're trying to move it ahead, but the reality is, we really didn't expect we could get it done, you know, that quickly. We can, we can continue to try.
Well, I don't think it's a major issue. I think it's a four inch conduit. I don't, I mean, I know you're saying they're going to dig up the grass. Yeah, you have to dig up the grass, you can put underground conduit in.
Right.
But it's a four inch conduit.
Correct.
You don't need much more, you don't need six foot wide trench holes to put a four inch conduit in. They know how to do it. You call Dig Safe, you won't be hitting any other pipes. I would just, I wouldn't wait a week to tell them what you're like. I'd probably call them tomorrow if they have to, and tell them what you're like and have them assess it and just move it along. That's all.
We could certainly make our best efforts, councillor.
No, thank you very much. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Consul in seat one, Consul Alon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to essentially echo what my colleague in seat three articulated, and it's, it's unusual that him and I actually agree very often, so this is a historic night, that we are going to agree on something. And I did want to just say, number one, I know we were talking about the Day of Portugal, but that wasn't really the intent of this whole resolution. The intent of the resolution was really just being, again, promoting the economic development that's going down, the vision that we have down there, and trying to do a better job of getting people down there to, you know, obviously promote the economic development and the arts that's going on. And I think what's happening is, is that obviously 200 phase, 200 amps of service isn't going to allow us to do anything.
Anything.
And to see what the Day of Portugal actually draws with that type of service, if we had a 400 amp service with three phase, and I, and I would suggest that we do that regardless, just in case anybody else needs it, so that we have the capacity, that we move forward and do that. Once we have that, then you're going to have more groups that are going to want to be able to utilize that. And if we can relocate the fountain, I think that just opens it up to people being more interested in, in the gates. Because I think when you drive by there, you see some limitations, and, and that prevents people from showing any interest to use, use the gates. So if you get the 400 amps of service, you are able to relocate the fountain, I say we just move in, move on it, and then that's going to attract more and more people. And we can start talking about, you know, the block potties that the Narrows has, has been doing and, you know, other prior administrations, you know, when we were looking at Fall River Celebrates America or the Flanagan administration when they were doing their block potties. You know, we can continue to do things like that and, and at a larger capacity, right? And, and promote the Battleship Cove, the Heritage State Park and everything that's going on down there. But again, I, I want to echo what my colleague, my colleague in seat three has said, it's not just one organization. It's about the city and the investment that was put down there. Because it was an investment, it is city owned land, and it is a benefit to, to the residents who are going to partake in that. And the, and the other piece is, if we are drawing people from other communities into Fall River, that just means that they're going to be, you know, going to our restaurants, we're getting meals taxed. I mean, there's a lot of revenue that's generated by having people coming in and partaking in some of these festivities that are, that are going on, even if the city's not making any money on this, where we start to see some of that money being flown in through the small businesses that we, we do in turn receive some additional taxes on. So to me, I think it's a, it's a no brainer. I think it's something that we should be doing immediately, and I agree with my colleague in seat two. If we can do this, you know, within the next couple of weeks, I say, at least from the electrical standpoint, let's just pull the trigger and see what that does, and see if it just generates more activity down there. And at that point, then we can come up with a master plan, like my colleague in Seat Three had stated, to try to get the state and kind of get a bigger picture of how to get that area more vibrant and more use out of that location. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you. Anything further? Counselors in Seat Seven, Counselor Pelletier.
You know, you talk about transparency and everything else, and stuff comes down and you want more information. You really know what this costs? You got any idea what this is going to cost?
We've done some preliminary estimates, and we're not to exceed a hundred thousand.
However, Counsel, just to interject, if we're able to use the existing conduit that's there, that Mass Dodd had already put in, then your estimate goes down to around fifty thousand dollars, because you're not re-trenching. So, again, we just wanted to be certain that, you know, what we were going to build was important and necessary. The other thing I do want to leave the public with as well, we are able to bring in generators, and we're confident that we're going to be able to provide the necessary electrical supply for India Portugal folks to be very successful at their activities. So, I don't want anyone to think that if it doesn't happen prior, that we're in any way going to inhibit their ability to do all of the performances that they're targeting. But I would agree, we recognize that it's going to have a much broader use and a broader appeal than simply that one event. But again, there is concern about digging it up and creating trenching, and then if there's excessive rain, it could be a problem in the area. But we'll simply move ahead and see if we can get National Grid on board to give us our capacity, and then determine where we go from there. But there would be a difference in cost between the two options, Counselor.
You know, my experience, one time, a hundred thousand, nah, it goes up, that's two hundred thousand. Cost overrun, three hundred thousand, three hundred and fifty thousand, we don't know. Now, you put a hundred thousand, you put a cap on it, can't put a cap on it, no, not to exceed a hundred thousand. How do you do that? You get the job half-done, you spend a hundred thousand, what do you do then? Oh, I told you, you're not going to spend more than a hundred thousand. Do you stop, or do you keep going?
Keep going.
Cost overruns, you know, no matter what, they dig up the street here, they were here for a long time because they hit ledge. That was a cost overrun. They didn't know. And same thing up there, we don't know. It's a good idea, it's a good idea, but I think we should get some help from the outside to do the job and make it nice for everybody. Not, we take all the cost on our side. That's the only thing I say. Yeah, they're right, it's good. They can come down, they can use it, they should help us with the electric, and somehow help us to set this up. And that's just how we feel. Not against it, it's just got to make sure we don't spend more than a hundred thousand, maybe, or whatever. And now we're kind of rushing a little bit. You want it done before June. I mean, you know, does it have to go out for bids or not bids? A dirty B, what is it? You know, sometimes we do things, oh, we're going to dirty B, got to go this, got to get a locket tech, you get everything. Right now, we're saying, well, let's do it, let's do it by June. That's it. I don't want no repercussions, that's it, I yield.
Thank you, Counselors in Seat Six, Counselor Long.
This was a fairly simple discussion that's kind of exploded a little bit, but if we're going to go down this road, I'm in favor of going for the whole ball of wax. I mean, if you're going to do it, and we're going to disrupt this area, do it once. Are they talking about eventually putting comfort stations in there? Are they eventually putting any kind of, anything? But let's be ready for it, and let's get it done. I mean, if we can put it in a central location, so that if they're going to do any further infrastructure improvement down there, then have it ready to go. I don't want to keep digging this up every two years. We start this, it starts going to something bigger and better and everything else, next thing you know, they're going to say, hey, let's dig it up again. You know, let's just say, hey, what is the maximum use of that piece of land down there, and what would be the capacity that would be utilized, and put it there. And then we can start to talk about it, but to just say, hey, let's get enough in there so we can run an extension cord to put some lights on, that doesn't make any sense for me. So, I mean, if we're talking about four-hundred-amp service being the maximum service that can go into that area, then that's what I say we do. But if we're going to be looking at this and talking about, Counselors in Seat Three, which I absolutely agree with, make it a destination area, but let's do it right, and do it right the first time. And whatever that cost is, is what it is. If we can, if we can get some of the people down there to throw in some construction help or some other type of help, then we take it. But if we're going to make it into a destination, do it the right way. We're not going to go halfway, go all the way. So, it's a great discussion, but I'm in favor of doing it the right way once, make as little disruption down there as possible. If we're going to dig trenches, dig them once, and get it over with, and let's move on. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. In Seat Three, Counselor Kamara.
Well, I want to applaud my colleague in Seat Six, Counselor Long, who has raised a good point. You're right, one of the biggest complaints that often happens is porta-johns, and if we can create a total facility there. You know, there are very few public places that have had a great deal of private money put into them to make them what they are. So, as we proceed with this issue, and I don't think you're prepared today to tell me that, but what was the private money that went into building that place? Because that was built predominantly with private money. It wasn't public, it was probably public support, but it was private money, and my colleague in Seat Two is absolutely right. It was the mayor of Befford Street, Mr. Silva, Liberal Silva, who is really a great unsung hero in this community, for all that he's done in this community. But he spearheaded a multi, I believe, multi-hundred-thousand-dollar investment in that property. So, that when we're talking about investing some public money into the facility, into that venue, we're doing it as, we've been incentivized to do it because of the private money that built that facility. So, I don't, I can't think of another place in Fall River that has had that kind of private investment that, then, on public land. I, in fact, thought it was owned by some group of businessmen until today. I thought that that was predominantly a privately-owned parcel that had public events. So, I'm pleased to hear that it's a public event, and I think that the bandshell is something that we ought to be revitalizing. You know, Joe Reposo was an outstanding, world-renowned composer from Fall River, and there's always been talk about we need to do something that is a tribute to Joe Reposo and his contributions to Sesame Street, and all of the music that all of these generations have grown up with, and that was Fall River's own Joe Reposo. So, you know, my sense is that if we got behind doing something appropriate, and we said we wanted to see private investment to develop a Joe Reposo, I know that Rick Olivera is probably saying, hey, that's my idea. I think I joined with Rick right at about the same time. But for decades, we've been saying that we should have a tribute to Joe Reposo, and what better tribute than a bandshell, where music could be presented to the community? So, I think there's much opportunity, and I'm going to ask that upon completion of this, that I'm sure my colleagues on economic development and tourism will appreciate having something on their agenda. But both Mr. Liberty LeBeau and Mr. Long have served as Chair of the Economic Development. Mr. Liberty LeBeau is serving now as Chair, and Mr. Long serving as former Chair, and I would encourage us to keep this alive by referring it to a committee so that we can continue to advance this. So, I'll do that at some point, and I hope that Counsel will support keeping this issue alive by having a committee oversee some future development. I yield.
Thank you, Counselors in Seat One. Counselor Cadine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just quickly, I don't want to belabor the point, but, I mean, often we talk about going to other communities and seeing what they put on for performances and activities, and we always walk away saying, why can't we do that in Fall River? Right? So, we have the opportunity to do it now. Right? And I want to just remind my colleagues, just a couple of months ago, we were talking about spending a hundred and sixty thousand dollars on a corner lot for Maplewood Park to put a sign. We start talking about trying to invest money to have people actually utilize a landmark, and we want to see more information, and we question everything. Okay? So, let's do the right thing, let's invest in the infrastructure that we currently have, and let's make it better so it can be utilized by everybody in the city. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor.
Anything further from the Counsel on this item? Hearing none.
I move to refer to the Committee on Economic Development and Tourism.
Motion to refer to the Committee on Economic Development and Tourism has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara, seconded by Counselor Long. Discussion on the motion to refer, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is a discussion for the FY 2019 Quarter Three Budget Report. Madam City Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Counsel. The quarterly report that is before you does contain information as presented in the joint budget hearing that we had, I believe it was several weeks ago, so this, it's the same information. Just to highlight it, once again, the report that you're looking at, and if you go to page one in your first tab, you'll see a summary of the activities. I would just remind the Counsel that at this point in time, if you go to the far right-hand corner, you're seeing percentages. Given the fact that this is through March 31st of 2019, we are, at that point, seventy-five percent through the fiscal year. So, on average, with some exceptions that I'll note, you should be seeing numbers approximately around that seventy-five percent mark if the budget is on track and likely to finish out the year as it was originally anticipated. As you know, we've mentioned previously, there are sometimes exceptions to that column. We have items such as debt service, certain property insurance, as an example. The auditors did an independent audit. There are times when those numbers will come in higher than the percentage that you note, and that's simply a timing issue, unless, of course, we flag it for you and note it otherwise. So, going through the report, again, overall, the budget is on track to close balanced. We're not anticipating any significant issues with the budget. I will highlight a few of the items for you. I know that there has been ongoing question regarding the elimination of the PATE program and the sale of the purple bags. On page one, again, if you look at other charges, solid waste, this is the line item that would have had the purple bag revenue in it. The actuals, as of 3/31/19, one million five hundred and seventy thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars, and it's showing at sixty-five point five percent. We anticipate that the original estimate of receipts from the purple bags will end up being approximately eight hundred thousand dollars less than what was originally budgeted. That also had a corresponding decrease on the expense side for the purchase of bags that shows up otherwise in your report. However, if you look at the local receipts, again, I'm still on page one, that far right-hand, you're seeing that the combination of the local receipts is still, right now, at seventy-seven point nine percent. So, again, in total, we're doing okay, and we estimate that we're going to do fine based on, actually, I apologize, it's a seventy point three percent. But we are seeing some increases in some of our other line items, so we're anticipating that revenue will come in close to budgeted expense. If we turn the page, pages two and three, look at the overall activity on the expense side. I guess I would just highlight for you, again, everything else is running fairly much on track. If you go down under the Community Maintenance section, you'll see snow removal does come in, the salaries and expenses, you are seeing those are both well over a hundred percent. We've estimated that the deficit in the snow and ice for the fiscal year will be approximately three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Last year, we were able to cover the snow and ice deficit, which was actually much larger last year, based on funds that were available within our existing accounts. So, we are certainly going to attempt to do that again this year and cover it on that basis. We do have a overall expense projection. Again, we're at seventy-eight point four percent. Additionally, on the expense side, and this is on page three of your first tab, under the Police Department salaries, that is an expense line that is coming in over your seventy-five percent. We have incurred some additional overtime expenses for some activities that were ongoing in the Police Department. There, as you recall, there was that shooting on South Main Street where we were beefing up patrols for an additional coverage there. There have been some other incidents on the police side that have necessitated some additional overtime expenses. I don't really want to highlight those if I don't have to recoup those, but because of some special enhanced activities and special coverage on the Police Department side, we are coming in a little over budget on that one. But here again, we are seeing that overall, in community protection, we're only at the seventy-five point seven percent. So, because we are seeing some of the other line items in that account category coming in under the seventy-five percent. So, we remain comfortable that we're going to be able to cover those overages. And then the last one I would simply highlight for you is, in elections, you'll see that both of the elections lines, salary and expenses, are coming in over the seventy-five percent. That was due to the special election. What we will do is see if those funds can be simply transferred from another line item within the city budget that may have funds available. So, we will likely be back before you, as we routinely are in the month of June, to make additional transfers to assure that all of the accounts and the lines remain balanced at year-end. And at that point, I'll be happy to entertain any of your questions.
Thank you. And while the Counsel prepares for their questions, Mrs. Vares, my only question and point of information, on the Purchase Street Capital Project, I know that we bonded for about one point three million dollars for the Purchase Street project. According to our quarterly update, it is at one hundred percent completion. I know Counselor in Seat Seven questioned some cost overruns. Did this project see any cost overruns that exceeded the one point three?
There were some items that were part of the project, Mr. President, that were funded using Chapter 90 funds. That's fairly standard. If we are engaging in work that qualifies for Chapter 90 funding, we have used that. You've probably seen LAL Construction has been over in the area doing some work. Again, that's through the Chapter 90 funding allocation. We do have a change order or two that remain outstanding that we will negotiate with the contractor, but again, we're hopeful that we're going to come in on budget on that. But that may be part of what you were seeing, were the funds that were utilized from Chapter 90. And there also were some cost overruns on the underground work that was done for Water and Sewer Department. Your colleague in Seat Eight mentioned ledge that was found, so there were some things that became overruns. But those items were actually financed by the Water and Sewer accounts, so those would be showing up on that side.
And I'm not expecting you to know this, but do you know the overall total cost of that Purchase Street project off the top of your head?
I would have to get that total for, are you including the water and the sewer and the Chapter 90?
Yeah, well-
Sure, I can get you that number.
So, that project obviously exceeded the one point three million dollars.
Yeah, I believe it was three million one point three nine eight. Yeah, almost one point.
By another two million dollars?
But yes, Counselor, it did exceed.
Okay, thank you. Counselors in Seat Seven, Counselor Pelletier.
How much did it exceed?
Counselors in Seat Two.
Mr. Vares, did you just say it was a three-million-dollar project?
Pardon me?
Did you say it was a three-million-dollar project?
No, I said one point three.
Oh, okay.
Nine eight.
All right, because I thought you were going to say three, it exceeded by three million, so just wanted to get a point of clarification.
No, 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 that's correct. Thank you for that correction.
Thank you very much. Counselors in Seat Seven, Counselor Pelletier.
To that, what was the overrun cost?
Again, Counsel, I would have to get that for you. The overrun that we know of was in the Water and Sewer Division, so I'm going to have to get that from Mr. Sullivan in terms of the exact cost overrun on that.
They were there a long time.
Pardon me?
They were working there for a long time.
They were, yes. They encountered some significant underground conditions. I know there were some utility lines that were not where the as-bills had anticipated they were, so there were some unexpected encounters for underground lines, and then, as you mentioned, you know, ledge. So, the total cost of the Purchase Street project was, and this is on page 21 under your Capital Projects, one million three hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars, which again, almost one point four million was the total that was bonded.
My question's been answered, I just want to ask you one question.
Certainly.
One of my constituents, which has purple bags, and he says to me, well, I've got eight cases here. I said, well, you're going to try to get the city to buy them back? I think, the thing is, they're going to buy them back. But you know, I says, well, what, how much does it cost a case? He says, five hundred dollars a case. He's got four thousand dollars worth of bags. But he says, look, I think I'm all sad, I haven't heard from, for about a week, but he certainly wants to get some money back, that's for sure.
Is it a retailer, Counselor, a store that was selling the bags?
Yeah.
Yeah, they should have been contacted by Waste Zero regarding the return of the bags, and I know that there is going to be an additional payment that will be, a reimbursement payment that will be made, once Waste Zero has collected all of those surplus bags from the retailers who had purchased them.
All right, so if he's not up to snuff, does he call you?
Oh, certainly, yeah, absolutely. I can certainly follow up on that for him. Now, and I'm assuming he's paid for the bags?
Oh, they're all paid for, that's for sure.
Okay, certainly, yeah, they will be-
You don't get the bags until you pay.
Well, no, there actually is credit that's extended with thirty, sixty days. Well, he may have paid for his, but certainly, but so long as he's paid for them, he will be reimbursed for them.
Okay, I'll pass the message on, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselors in Seat Six, Counselor Long.
Just a quick question. If I remember on the, this project out here, what did we say?
Purchase Street.
Purchase Street.
Purchase Street project. The contract on that, we were forced to take him, correct?
Yes, Counselor.
Originally, we had another bidder, but he went in and made a complaint to AG's office. AG said, too bad, you got to go back and take that bidder. And then we encounter all of his problems, where he pulled up the sidewalk, pulled up the streets, and all that type of stuff, in one shot, made a mess of it. Have we notified the AG's office as to what's happened after we did?
Yes, Counselor, they're well aware of the difficulties that we've had with the contract.
Okay. I yield.
Thank you, Counselors in Seat One, Counselor Cadine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just staying on Purchase Street, so to my colleague in Seat Six, it's not until after you do the bids, you do the awards, that you actually got to fill out the D-CAM certifications and stuff like that, and then you do the notifications to, obviously, D-CAM and to the AG's office, just explaining what your experience was with the particular vendors that we have. So, just in terms, though, of the overrun, you said it was a Water and Sewer, how are they funding that overrun?
It was through the Water and Sewer Department budget. There was a contract issued for them, and, you know, reimbursement through Water and Sewer.
Yeah, but how are they doing the, how are they funding it, though? They had it in the budget?
Yes, yes.
How much was the overrun?
Mr. Sullivan is here.
Again, I'm going to have to get you the exact-
I don't know if he's prepared to answer it, but he is here.
I don't know if he has it, if he does, certainly.
So, first, I don't have the exact numbers, but the funding was, that district for the CSO project is required to have sewer separation. So, whenever there's a large street project coming up, we try to partner with the Engineering Department, that's what we did in this case. coming up, we try to partner with the engineering department. That's what we did in this case. So, the design and the construction of the sewer separation was paid for by us through the CSO project authorization. And the cost overruns were primarily due to utilities and the ledge, which is not an uncommon problem that we deal with.
So, did you absorb that through contingency? Or did you take it from another project?
It's from the CSO bond authorization for separation in those districts, both the City Pier District and the Central Street District, as well as the North End Alton Street District through 2025, is supposed to have complete sewer separation. So, that was in that district. It was planned for a future contract for us, but obviously, we don't want the street paved, then come back in and rip it up to put a drain in. So, that came off of the CSO authorization, which funds were.
So, you had it based on the authorization from the city council?
Yes.
Okay. So, it's not going to impact any other projects? You're not going to have to come back to the council for additional authorization for bonding or anything like that?
I hate to come back to the council.
I know you do. I know you do. I'm just.
The authorization was available.
And so, what are we looking? So, there's, we have change orders? Is that what we're looking at, that was performed by the contractor, outstanding?
The change orders for Water and Sewer?
I'm hearing there was more.
In our case, the change orders for the drainage and the ledge removal have already been approved, authorized, and paid.
So, was that the one that's in, because I'm hearing there's like 1.3 million or over a million dollars that the contractor's still owed on this project?
That's not from the sewer side of things. We've agreed and we've paid out. We, Sewer has no further dispute with this.
So, what I understood was that that project itself, obviously, maybe some work was done so that there were maybe some change orders that weren't signed in advance through the contractor doing work. And I know there's probably some negotiations going back and forth as to what the city is on the hook for and what the contractor's on the hook for.
It's in dispute, Councilor, yes.
Okay, all right. Just in terms of going back to the revenues, so, I know you said we're going to have a balanced budget, but I was just looking at.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. I think we're good with you.
Thank you. The 74.2 percent for the total revenue. So, I mean, that's, if, obviously, if we needed the 100 percent, I know your expenses are coming in a little lower than anticipated, but that's showing a, I guess, a delta of $2.3 million. And I know 900,000 was presented to this council that it was due to the bags, right? So, what's the other, what are the other major items and local receipts that we're missing?
All right. So, in particular, motor vehicle, we actually have not had our largest commitment come in yet. So, historically, there has been an inordinate amount of motor vehicle excise received in the fourth quarter. So, based on how we're tracking, we're already at 75.9. There's a reasonable expectation that that number's going to exceed 100 percent. So, that's going to come in higher. And again, we have recurring revenue. Medicaid is never a certainty, but that comes in in the fourth quarter, too. There's a very large payment received. That's for the down under recurring. That's actually the Medicaid reimbursement that we get on schools due to schools' activity. So, that number could very well come in higher. So, based on what we're seeing and we're estimating, we're hopeful that the revenue will come in. However, in anticipation of your next question, certainly if on the expense side of the budget, we're able to reduce expenditures, the budget will remain balanced.
Okay. And then, community protection, that department, I know they're pretty close, but I'm just curious about the police department salaries running at 78 percent?
Again, the majority of that is the overtime. That is exceeded what was budgeted. And we're hopeful, as I mentioned, there were some specific instances that occurred where we wanted to bolster the police presence. And again, that was all done on an overtime basis.
Okay. So, are we anticipating that the police expenses are going to be pretty consistent so we can make a transfer over to the salaries?
Yes. I don't know if it'll all come out of the expense side. I know at a glance right now, it's looking that way, that they will have money available there. I'm not certain, and I would not anticipate that the expense reduction is going to fully cover the salary overage. So, I think there's going to have to be a transfer made into that department from another line within the municipal budget.
Okay. But we are monitoring, obviously, the overtime and all that other good stuff?
Yes, absolutely.
My other question was, on quarter three, city expenses. So, that's the one, two, three, fourth tab.
Yes. Page?
So, page one. So, the mayor's office, there's other stipends. I don't recall that in quarter two.
Okay, so the...
$5,000 stipend.
Right. Yes, correct. That stipend was given to the mayor's administrative assistant because she assumed the duties of chief of staff, which that position has been vacant since January, and it remains vacant to this day. So, the mayor wanted to provide that stipend to that individual for picking up the additional duties that would have been performed by the chief of staff.
Can I get through the President to the clerk? Where are we with the resolution that was filed? I believe there's two resolutions out there in terms of no stipends being issued without the city council approval?
They're both pending in committee.
Do you know what committee that is? Is it ordinance?
Yes.
Can we, I mean, this is getting ridiculous. Every time I turn around, there's another stipend that's being issued for duties that should be assumed by individuals. I mean, we've got individuals that are on salary getting stipends. So, if we can, I'm not sure, is that ordinance committee?
Yes.
So, if we can just revive those, yeah, I mean, it just, it's a $10,000 stipend, a $5,000 stipend. I mean, these are significant stipends. So, I, for one, just getting tired of seeing stipends all over the place every time I open up a budget book. So, you know, I'll let my colleagues voice their own concerns, but I really want to address this in an ordinance. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Councilor in seat five, Councilor Vice President LeBeau.
Just in regards to the Purchase Street project, I did have a couple of conversations with Mrs. Sahadi, and I do have some of the numbers that she had given me as of February 19th. I also sat down with the city auditor and the city engineer and the city planner. So, what Mrs. Sahadi had explained was, on the Capital Project for $1,398,000, we would never see that go over because that was the amount approved by the council. So, what we would see would be the invoices going to other places, such as utilities in Chapter 90. So, as of February 19th, the utilities total for Purchase Street on top of the $1,398 million was $1,2,525.09. And the Chapter 90 money as of February 19th, used on that project is $220,938. I also have the big street and East Main Street numbers. But what I had spoken to, another counselor was going to sponsor the resolution once we knew that East Main and Purchase were done, were to put in a resolution to have it come in to finance so that all the councils would have the numbers and it could be explained with everybody at the table. So, I just wanted to clear up some of that, although the numbers are from the 19th of February, so they may have changed since then. And just in regards to the stipend, was that for the, did you say that was for the secretary?
Yeah, the administrative assistant, yes, at the front desk.
Okay. I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor in seat four, Councilor Kilby.
Just one quick question. Did the Miss Andrade, who took a leave of absence, did she file a letter of resignation?
Actually, she didn't. Her contract was ended, Councilor. So, she's not on leave. She's no longer employed by virtue of the termination of the contract. And I would add that the mayor is, clearly has a surplus in his salary line because of that. So, the stipend was able to be paid using the surplus funds that were already in the line item.
How many chiefs of staffs under this administration? This is the fourth one, right? Number four?
It could be four, Councilor. You've obviously worked through it. Off the top of my head, I have to.
I just wanted to bring that up. Okay. But thank you. I yield.
Thank you very much. Anything further from the council in seat seven, Councilor Pelletier?
Just, they went out for bids for the streetlights on East Main Street?
They are in the process of actually doing that now, Councilor. There's...
Wasn't that included, all included?
No, Councilor.
It wasn't?
No. When the original project was done, it was in the original design, but due to budgetary concerns, and again, it was a decision made by the prior planner, that the lights would not be included. But when we started actually reviewing the scope of the work with the residents, and also, I would say, the mayor was a strong proponent that lights needed to be included in the project. But they were not part of the original bid on the project. And so, we're going out now. We have IFB out there now to purchase the lights and hope to get them installed, you know, this spring.
Now, why does my colleague in seat number three have brand-new lights on his street?
Well, the lights are coming, Councilor. They're going to be very pretty.
Well, he's got more drag than I got, I guess.
No, no. His lights were included in his original bid, the total project bid.
And they're nice, too.
They're very nice.
Well, it's going to be the next street over.
LaBarren Street has, where I live, we have old goose neck lights attached to telephone poles.
All right. Let me restate that. His property of in that area, the new lights. Now, what kind of money is this going to cost us? Do we get any idea?
Council, I don't have the exact number with me. I can certainly get that for you. The other thing I would add is that they are replacing the signal at the intersection of Globe and East Main. As you know, they wanted to make that fully compliant. It's going to have all of the ADA requirements there. And that was a decision that was made additionally. There may actually even be a separate funding source for that, but I'll get back to you with that. But we felt that while the project was under construction, it was important to include the new signalization as well. So, those lights will be completed as well as the decorative lights all along East Main Street.
Well, I call that cost overrun, whatever the case may be. It's going to look nice, I guess. Money's money's money.
It's going to look very nice, Councilor.
Thank you. Anything further from the council? Hearing none. Thank you very much. Is there a motion to adjourn finance?
Motion to adjourn finance.
Motion to adjourn has been made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by Councilor Pelletier. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. Forward city council meeting will now be called to order. Madam Clerk.
Counselors Kadeem?
Here.
Joseph Kamara?
Here.
Stephen Kamara?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Alibi LeBeau?
Here.
Long?
Here.
Pelletier?
Here.
Vares?
Here.
President.
Here. Everybody in the chamber, could please rise for a moment of silent prayer? Thank you, and a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed to acknowledge and permissible. Madam Clerk.
The first item before you is a communication from the mayor and an order appropriating $1 million from the general fund insurance appropriation to the general fund school appropriation.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt is made by Councilor Kadeem, seconded by Councilor Long. Discussion on the adoption? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number two is a communication from the mayor and a request for the confirmation of the appointment of Robert Kerr to the library trustees.
To adopt?
Motion to confirm and adopt has been made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by Council Vice President LeBeau. Discussion, Councilor in seat five, Council Vice President LeBeau.
Yes, I know this says appointment, but just so that council is aware, he was a member, and then the appointment expired just a few months ago, actually. So...
Very similar to a reappointment.
Yes. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you. Anything further from the council? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Councilor in seat one opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number three is a communication from the mayor and a proposed ordinance regarding the approval process for Park Project.
Refer to ordinance?
Motion to refer to ordinance has been made by Councilor Kadeem, seconded by Councilor Kadeem. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
I have a communication from the mayor and a loan order in the amount of $7,426,775 for repairs to the Samuel Watson Elementary School.
Refer to finance?
It'd be appropriate to authorize this to be published and refer to finance.
So moved.
Motion to authorize to be published and refer to finance has been made by Councilor Kadeem, seconded by Councilor Long. Discussion, Councilor in seat one, Councilor Kadeem.
Can I just ask that, when this goes before Finance Committee, that we just obviously get a presentation from the school department explaining exactly what the upgrades and stuff would be?
Mr. Pacico did ask me if his attendance was necessary tonight. I told him it wasn't. So, I'm sure he'll be here for when it comes back before the council.
One other point on that, and also include the AD, disabilities, project ADA?
The ADA, yeah.
Yeah, because that's in addition to that number, from what I understand.
I believe it is. Yep. So, we'll have that joint presentation. Madam Clerk, if you can make note of that, indicate that to the school department so they're prepared for that presentation. Motion has been made to authorize to be published and refer to the Committee on Finance has been made by Councilor Kadeem, seconded by Councilor Long. Any further discussion on the item? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Can I make a point from the President to the Chair?
Sure.
Last week, last meeting, I believe there were, after that meeting, there was a question as to, one of the items was up for reconsider, was going to be up for reconsideration. How does that work if you're going to bring some up for reconsideration? Does that happen? The meeting, you take the vote? Can it happen the meeting after the vote? It happens two meetings after the vote?
So...
How does that work?
So, how that works is, it's my opinion, and I've researched this on a couple of items, that if you want to make a motion to reconsider, it needs to occur in that same meeting that the vote took place. I know there's been other stories that have happened, but verifying some items recently, I can tell you that the reconsideration needs to occur in that meeting before it adjourns, I believe. That's how it would be.
You're correct.
And so, if there is a specific item that you want to reconsider, we can always add it to another agenda item.
But within that reconsideration, there were other pieces. Do those pieces, are those pieces still alive, or do you have to go all the way back to the beginning?
Are you referring to a specific item?
Yeah, tie.
The tie agreement. So, because that was at a...
Because that's what we voted on.
Right. So, the prevailing party would need to make a motion to reconsider at that meeting, which was at the last meeting.
So, in order to go back, they have to reconsider the tie. The tie has to be approved.
Yes, but on specific items, I've asked that the administration prepare themselves for another presentation on any, because there's been some concerns that have been raised to me about that. And I've advised the administration to prepare a presentation for the Committee on Finance at the next meeting, on the specific tie that you're referencing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor in seat four, Councilor Kilby?
Just one quick point to, I made a motion that those two items get referred to finance. It failed, so I would suggest next time, we do that. We follow that cause. Refer ties to finance for further discussions.
And for...
I don't want to, you know, be disparaging to my colleagues, but I think that's probably a question.
Noted. And Council, what I'll do going forward, when I prepare the agenda, when we have ties before us, I'll make sure that it is on the Committee on Finance and in full council.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Anything further from the council? Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Committee on Finance, at a meeting held on April 11th, voted unanimously to recommend the accompanying resolution be granted leave to withdraw. This was the funding for the fall of a public library roof replacement.
Move to adopt the committee's recommendation.
Move to adopt the committee's recommendation to give the item leave to which it has been made by Councilor Stephen Kamara, seconded by Councilor Long. Discussion, Councilor in seat two, Councilor Kilby.
Not to confuse anyone that's listening, but this is just giving leave to withdraw to the resolution, but the funding is in place, and the people are going to get a roof on it. I just want to seem like someone sees that we're giving the leave to withdraw to fund the roof. It's just a resolution that was submitted to the council, which is no longer needed because the funding is in place and the council voted to support that funding.
Thank you, Councilor.
We're going to clarify that. Thank you.
Anything further? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
I have a citation.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt the citation has been made by Councilor Kadeem, seconded by Councilor Long. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number seven is an order rescheduling three meetings of the city council.
To adopt?
Motion to adopt the scheduled change of the council meetings has been made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by Councilor Long. Discussion, Councilor in seat five, Council Vice President LeBeau.
Just a question to the clerk. We were originally polled for a May change as well. Is that not happening?
Yeah.
The May meetings are staying the same?
That we couldn't make a change to the May meeting because there was just too many
I yield, thank you.
The June meeting was changed.
June meeting was changed, yep.
In September.
And the September meeting was changed as well, because that was on election day. Any further, Councilman, seat seven?
Yeah, which, the dates of May is what?
The dates of May remained as your schedule accordingly, the only dates have changed are Tuesday, June 11th, has been changed to Tuesday, June 11th, and September 3rd, and September's, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yeah, June 7th is the rescheduled meeting from the 4th. What we'll do is make sure the clerk sends everybody the updated calendar tomorrow.
It's right in our packet.
It is in our packet, but what I could do is, we can, we can have the clerk's office tomorrow, send everybody a reminder, so that there's no confusion.
Counselor, May is May-
May is what, that was the question.
Fourteenth and the 28th.
And the 28th. Okay, thank you.
Yep, we haven't, we made no change to the May meeting. All right.
All right.
So, any further discussion on that item? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Have the police chief's report?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt the police chief's report, has been made by Councilor Kadeem, seconded by-
Second.
Councilor Pelletier, discussion, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
The renewal of an auto repair shop at 958 County Street.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made by Councilor Kadeem, seconded by Councilor Long, discussion, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
We have a number of claims.
Motion to refer to cooperation council.
Motion to refer claims to cooperation council is made by Councilor Kadeem, seconded by Councilor Long, discussion, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Item 11 is a request for a structure over a public way on behalf of the Day of Portugal.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve has been made by Councilor Kadeem, seconded by Councilor Kilby, discussion, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Motion to take items 12 to 16.
Motion to take items 12 through 16 together has been made by Councilor Kadeem, seconded by Councilor Long, discussion, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Madam Clerk. Want to approve items 12 through 16?
Yeah, motion to approve.
Motion to approve items 12 through 16, which is the regular meeting of the city council on March 5th, the Committee on Finance, March 5th, public hearings on April 11th, the city resident requesting a cap on a number of tobacco licenses, and a city resident requesting a cap on a number of marijuana licenses, has been made by Councilor Kadeem, seconded by Councilor Long, discussion, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Item number 17, which was filed after the agenda was prepared, is the communication from the resident regarding the Serta bus service to Boston Hospitals.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, I would move that we forward this for action to the Committee on Public Works and Transportation.
Motion to refer to Public Works and Transportation has been made by Councilor, Stephen Kamara, seconded by Councilor Kilby, discussion, Councilman, seat three, Councilor Kamara.
I would just ask that in passing this, that representatives from Serta and Serped, I don't know if there are any others that should be included, but city administration, because city administration has places on the boards of Serta and Serped, I believe, so, the members of the administration, along with Serta and Serped, to attend this meeting.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk, you have that note?
Yes.
Great. Motion's been made to refer to Public Works and Transportation, has been made and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
We have an application for a structure on or over a public way for Burt's Restaurant, located at 201 South Main Street, this is to place tables and chairs on the sidewalk, May 1st through September 30th.
Motion to approve and adopt's made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by-
Second.
Councilor Long, discussion, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.